Good evening and welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting for October 18, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, well, we have no proclamations this evening. We have a few committee appointments in a moment, and then we're going to get an administrative report from the Cable Advisory Board for Learning and Education presented by Gary Stokes. So, Madam Clerk, if you want to read the committee appointments and reappointments.
Reappointment of Jack Archer to serve a three-year term on the Spokane Human Rights Commission from July 24, 2021 to December 31, 2024. And a reappointment of Meredith Rainville and Dean Feldmeyer to a three-year term on the Hotel Advisory Commission to serve from December 1, 2021 to November 30, 2024, and appoint Matt Jensen to a three-year term to serve November 1, 2021 to October 31, 2024.
All those in favor of confirming these appointments and reappointments indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay, any abstentions? All right, thank you all for your service, and for those of you who are interested in city boards and commissions, there is a webpage at the city that has all the dozens of boards, commissions, and committees that community members serve on and assist us, and also it has a page of current vacancies. And in almost all cases, the mayor's office accepts applications and nominates people for appointment, and then the city council interviews them and then has a vote on whether or not to confirm them. So, thanks, everyone. And with that, I would like to turn things over to Gary Stokes from what we call Cable, the Cable Advisory Board for Learning and Education. Gary, welcome to City Council.
Thank you very much, Council President Beggs, and thank you to the rest of the council for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you may be aware, Cable was formed back in 1980 to serve as the custodian for five educational cable channels on the Cox Cable System for to meet the educational needs of Spokane area educational institutions. Since then, there have been many changes, there have been additions and subtractions. At one point, the Cable members included the community colleges, both the Falls and Community College, EWW, Fort Wright College Gonzaga, Intercollegiate Center for Nursing Education, North Idaho College, District 81, and the Spokane Diocese, amongst others. Now, we are at a small but hearty group of people who are still in the television business and still in the interest of making sure that people have the ability to not only watch the best programming they possibly can, but to have the most and best educational programming they possibly can. And we certainly appreciate the grants annually from the council, what you've enabled us to do, not only at KSPS, but also through Spokane District 81. You've given us the opportunity to continue to move forward on our mission, which is to provide quality educational content to all of the viewers we serve, and thanks to our friends at Comcast who have been supporting this initiative for several years, we're able to continue to do that. While, as many other organizations have had, we've had some people drop off, we've had some organizations drop off, but in the end, we still remain, and we still remain committed to our goal, which is to provide educational and informational programming throughout the viewing area. As of right now, while the Cable Board has shrunk so too have the number of offerings that had been available as part of the Cable/PEG agreement. As you all know, the letters PEG in PEG stand for public, which is community-minded television, educational channels, which we've already discussed, and government, which is where we are now and how we're watching all of you. As a result, we have members of our own consortium who provide a small stipend for us, and right now, that's just KSPS and Spokane Public Schools. But we're leveraging those dollars, and certainly the dollars that you provide us for capital equipment, so that we're able to do more and to be a better servant to all of the people who watch the programming that we provide. Everything from being able to do high school graduations up to and including what we've done just recently when the pandemic hit, where we worked with District 81 to provide daily lessons from teachers so that students in our district wouldn't be left behind. And my favorite part of all of this is at the end of the school year, when with help from District 81, the entire KSPS production team works to provide every second of every minute of every hour of every graduation ceremony for every student in District 81 graduating from high school. We've been doing that for several years now, and even through the pandemic, we were able to still do that at the pavilion. So, we like to think that we are a service that not only provides education, but also provides a way for people to continue to learn long past the time that they thought they didn't have anything else to learn. I will pass that back over to you, Council President, if you have any specific questions or comments.
Thank you so much for the report and the work of your group and all the organizations. Any specific questions from council members? All right. Well, again, thank you, Gary and team, and we'll look forward to hearing from you next year on the great work that you're doing. With that.
Thank you very much.
Let's turn to our legislative agenda, and we're going to start with special budget ordinances.
Ordinance C-36112, amending ordinance number C-35971, passed by the City Council December 14, 2020, and entitled, in ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane Government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in. Ordinance C-36112, Section 1 Asset Management Fund, Number 1, increase appropriation by $128,512. A $128,512 of the increased appropriation is transferred from the Asset Management Capital Fund to the Asset Management Fire Capital Fund. And Section 2 Asset Management Fire Capital Fund, Number 1, increase revenue appropriation by $128,512. A of the increased appropriation, $128,512, is a transfer from Asset Management Capital Fund. Number 2, increase appropriation by $128,512. B of the increased appropriation, $128,512, is provided solely for capital expenditures related to fire. This action allows for capital expenditures in the Asset Management Fire Capital Fund.
All right, this is a precursor to some contracts for fire department purchasing some additional equipment. There's no public commentary requested. Is there any council commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next, special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C-36113, General Fund, Number 1, decrease the appropriation level for the Court Clerk 1 position by $14,000. A, increase the appropriation level for supplies by $14,000. Two, there is no change to the appropriation level in the general fund. This action allows for supplement in the office supplies budget to allow the court to effectively operate until the end of the year.
All right, pretty straightforward, and again, no community commentary requested. We'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next, we're at emergency ordinances. We only had one, but on historical reuse, but we deferred that until January 24th. So, that brings us to resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Resolution 2021-69 of the City Council of the City of Spokane to revise the appropriation of funds from the City of Spokane Community Housing and Human Services Department to the Salvation Army for the purpose of funding a regional targeted capacity emergency shelter called the Way Out Center for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026, and other matters relating there, two deferred from October 4, 2021 agenda.
All right, and there are two members of the public who have requested to testify. The first is Cheryl Mitchell, and then Nicolette Ockletree. Ms. Mitchell, if you want to hit star three to raise your electronic hand. All right, we're not.
There's three callers, but no one's raising their hand.
Okay. So, again, Cheryl Mitchell, if you hit star three, you're there. All right, well, let's go to Nicolette Ockletree. Nicolette, if you'd like to hit star three, and we'll try for Cheryl after you. She's there. All right, who's this?
This is Nicolette Ockletree. Can you hear me?
Yes, Nicolette, welcome to City Council this evening. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, Council. What's the difference between a good neighbor agreement and good neighbor protocols in an operating agreement? I've heard some say that it's a matter of semantics, but is that really true? Let's say there is no difference between a good neighbor agreement and good neighbor protocols in an operating agreement. Well, if there truly were no difference, then it would be confusing as to why, according to City Attorney Ormsby, Salvation Army is unwilling to sign a good neighbor agreement, but will include good neighbor protocols in their operating agreement. The very fact that Salvation Army refuses to sign one but is willing to sign the other indicates that there is some substantive difference. So, what is the nature of that difference, and what impact will that have in our community? City Attorney, or sorry, City Administrator Perkins seemed confused today during the briefing session as to why anyone would be under the impression that low-barrier beds would ever be considered in the Way Out Shelter. He maintains his narrative has all along been referral-only beds for the Way Out Shelter. So, I want to piggyback off something brought up by City Councilwoman Stratton in the briefing session by reminding everyone that back in July, when the council was proposing changes to cooling and warming center ordinance, that Mayor Woodward called a community discussion in part to address her concerns that the changes would essentially defund her bridge shelter project. Suddenly, there was talk about the Way Out Shelter having both referral-only and low-barrier beds. The low-barrier beds that were removed from the system when Salvation Army shut down to remodel and transition into the bridge shelter have never been replaced. And as you may remember, the folks who were at the Way Out Shelter were moved to Cannon, and the folks from Cannon were kicked to the streets to make room. Now, the administration can deny low-barrier beds being discussed in the newly conceived Way Out Shelter until they're blue in the face. However, the long soap operatic drama has played out in front of all of our eyes, and some of us refuse to be the victims of their gaslighting. Furthermore, winter is nipping at our heels, and we're already down these low-barrier beds. In a few weeks, we will be here discussing the urgency and emergency of opening up low-barrier beds for folks to get shelter from the cold. Are we to understand that Salvation Army has no intention of expanding their operations to provide these? I seem more confused than ever before. Then, I heard during the briefing session also that the Spokane Regional Health District might be considering the Salvation Army Mission Shelter as a place for COVID patients to be housed. I think it's very odd because the county purchased that building and just gave it to Salvation Army with care funds. So, had they all along intended that to be used for those patients, that would have been a great use of those funds. But now that this contract is being considered, it seems to be at conflict with the operating agreements that are being discussed. I only have a few seconds, and I just hope that you guys take these all into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And Cheryl, you might want to try again. Webex icons were changed and different, so we didn't recognize your star three. If you hit star three, so if you're still there, Cheryl, if you could hit star three. All right. Not seeing a caller with their hand raised electronically, so apologies if we couldn't figure out how to make that work. That brings us to council member commentary on this resolution. Any council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Council President. So, I sponsored this back in July, when this conversation in need came up from a regional discussion that county and the city would support the bridge housing. And then the good neighbor agreements came up in discussions, and some things happened in that neighborhood that were not very good for businesses and people who lived there. And it's not only happened in that neighborhood, it has happened in District 2 as well, from shelters that maybe we didn't keep our word, and they didn't keep their word. However, the bridge housing is necessary for the people they are going to serve, and I understood and heard clearly about trust. Now, we cannot change the behavior of people who have gone before us, but to build trust, we as a council can keep our word. For that to be a low-barrier shelter, we would have to fund it from the city. And with the administration's pronouncement that that is not on their agenda, and yes, they need low-barrier beds, and they need to get, put a hurry up on that quickly, but at this point in time, I will be supporting this, again, unintended consequences for the people who will be served. There has been so much narrative around this, I believe we are all getting the message, providers, community, and council as really what needs to happen. So, I look forward to moving this on.
Councilmember Stratton.
I just want to, I'm hoping tonight that the neighbors in the Emerson Garfield neighborhood are watching. They've been concerned about this, and the businesses as well. And I want to assure them that Councilmember Cathcart and myself have done everything that we can to listen to their concerns. I want them to know that I value and respect the fact that I was elected to represent my district and to listen to those concerns, and I have tried to do that. I regret that I won't support this resolution. I don't see how this can be successful because with the added amendment that we did, what, two weeks ago, there is no good neighbor agreement. And every citizen in this community should ask themselves why we have organizations or an organization that is unwilling to sit down with the neighbors and the businesses and the city to work out these agreements. I think if we had, if we were successful in this, this would have been something we could take out and get neighborhoods and businesses together to work on, and we might have more compassionate and more accepting neighbors and neighborhoods and businesses that wouldn't mind having these kinds of projects in their neighborhood. So, I'm deeply, deeply concerned that this got to be such a big deal, and that we were never able, my, Councilmember Cathcart can talk about what his process has been with this, but I don't feel from day one that the City of Spokane was honest with this neighborhood. We were not honest with the businesses and what we were going to do with that building, and that continues. I'm ashamed, and I'm embarrassed, and I'm going to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think there's, you often hear the term trust, but verify, and certainly, I think I'm willing to trust a lot of things, but the problem has been that at every turn throughout this process, the piece that has been a sticking point has been this continued insistence by one party or another that there be some caveat to the exclusion of using the space for anything but bridge housing. And I really do think that bridge housing is probably the next phase of how we're going to address homelessness, is getting folks who are prepared to take that step and putting them in a position where they can be successful. And I just really worry that the allowance, which I do interpret as an allowance, a potential allowance, of a portion of this site to be used for a different population that is not ready to take that step, to perhaps create negative incentives for those who are. And I just, I want to see this bridge housing be successful. We've got to start making gains in terms of addressing homelessness, and I'm just really concerned. We've seen impacts as operated as a low-barrier shelter. We've seen impacts to the surrounding neighbors and businesses and those in the area, and some of those impacts have been substantial, some have just been an annoyance, but they've been there. Neighborhood never had a say in whether or not this was going to be cited, where it, there was never really a citing process, there was never a public engagement process, and it just, it is where it is. And bridge housing, it's great, the neighbors support it, I support it, but to allow it to be used for these other uses, that's not something I can support. And we do have this ongoing conversation around good neighbor agreements, not that really is the answer, to how we're sort of create a symbiotic relationship between the community and providers and the city itself, but there is no good neighbor agreement at this point in time. There's a couple ideas that are on paper, and we're referring to them as good neighbor protocols, but there's no real agreement there, and I think the agreement takes and give and take by everybody, and that's just not the case. And so, I'm going to vote no tonight. I don't want to because, again, I do support bridge housing. I think this is a good program, but I just don't think the sideboards are there, I don't think the process has been there, I don't think the neighbors have had the right opportunity to be heard. I just don't think that this is at the point where it should be approved. So, I'm going to vote no tonight.
Any other council commentary? All right, I'm just going to say briefly, I agree that the communication has been inadequate on this, and it really has turned into a real distraction from what should be and will be, I'm confident, a really good program, innovative bridge housing, and it's unfortunate that it kind of has that taste in the mouth that it does out there. But we did make it clear in our resolution that there's not going to be any funding out of this resolution unless there is a good neighbor agreement. And right now, people are imagining it's going to be in the operating agreement is where the good neighbor agreement terms are going to be, and so it won't get funded until that is done, and I'm glad that that's done, and I commend council members, particularly Stratton and Cathcart, for really being good advocates for getting that done. You know, the Salvation Army staff told me they're willing to do one of those, and I'm confident that we'll get that done because otherwise it won't get funded. So, I just hope that regardless of the past missteps in communication that could have been way better and more better public engagement, that we will focus on the good of this and reap the benefit, and hopefully it'll be a great example for other bridge sheltering that we can expand throughout the city. And once we get the good neighbor agreement language, then that will expand to all shelters that the city is a part of. So, I'm going to support this, and I support the Salvation Army's efforts, and I'm glad that they have begun meeting with the neighborhood, and I hope that that continues. With that, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
No.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes five to two, and that brings us to the next resolution.
Resolution 2021-85, declaring EnviroClean Equipment Incorporated a sole source provider and authorizing the purchase of replacement vacu assemblies for the Vaccon excavator cleaner trucks for the Fleet Services Department for a period of five years for up to $150,000 without public bidding.
There is no requested public comment. Is there any council commentary? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next, we're to an ordinance.
Ordinance C-36114, relating to the adjustment of the City of Spokane's business registration fee and amending Spokane Municipal Code 8.02.0206.
All right, this was originally an ordinance to increase the business registration fee from $120 a year to $127 a year through a series of amendments over the last week or so. The current language is that increase would not start till January 1, 2023, and also over the year of 2022, new business registrations would have a 50% discount. So, that's the current version of this. There are no requested public comments. Any council commentary? Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I just think this was great. We had a lot of collaboration from different council members on this and had a good discussion. And what I think the intent is here is that we want to encourage and attract new business to register in the City of Spokane. A lot of people during COVID and the pandemic kind of did a reset on life. A lot of people during COVID and the pandemic kind of did a reset on life and jobs, and maybe thought about making a change or even starting a new business. And we just think Spokane's a great place to do that, and we want to show our good faith by giving a 50% discount. It's a small token of our appreciation for them to pick the City of Spokane to start their new business, but most businesses start as small businesses. So we also know a lot of women start small businesses in Spokane, and it's a great opportunity next year, so take it while you've got the little bit of a break. And then I also support giving a break to all the existing businesses. It's a small token, but we know that many of them have had a really rough time, most of them, during the pandemic and the PPE and all the delays and shutdowns and labor shortages. So it's a small bit of money, but I hope it's important to send the message that Spokane supports businesses, especially small businesses.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I know keeping the fee flat for next year is a small thing, but I really do think it's important just to let those businesses know that we are, in fact, thinking of them. And, you know, during everything we've been through over the last 18 months, I just don't think it makes a lot of sense for them to come up at this time. So I appreciated the support from council to consider keeping that flat for all of '22. That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the input of Councilwoman Mum and others on the council. The reduction of 50% for new businesses is great, and I hope we do a good job as a city of promoting that fact. There's, you know, an opportunity now for maybe somebody who maybe didn't think about it before to take the risk and register their business and start to sell something or make something or do something that can turn into something really big and great. And if this small incentive is what, then I'm glad that we were able to put that in place. So glad to support this tonight.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I think we just want to show the businesses a little love in Spokane, that we support you, and that we're all in together, come out on the other side, so I will be supporting this.
All right, any other council commentary? All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. That gets us to first reading ordinances.
Ordinance C 36116, relating to stormwater facilities, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17D, .060.030, .050, .140, .190, .030, .070, .110, .210. Chapter 17D of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C 36117, relating to administration definitions, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17A, .020.010, .020, .040, .060, .080, .130, .140, and .190. And Ordinance C 36118, relating to floodplain management, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 17E, .030, .030, .050, .060, .070, .080, .090, .100, .120, .130, .140, .150, .160, and .170. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We had one request from the public to testify on the stormwater facilities ordinance change, 36116. That's Amanda Mars. Amanda, if you're there, if you could hit star three. All right, welcome to City Council, Amanda. You have up to three minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Fantastic, thank you. My name is Amanda Mars, and I represent the Department of Ecology as the Eastern Washington Phase II Municipal Storm Water Permit Planner. Ecology's Eastern Regional Office address is 4601 North Monroe Street, Spokane, Washington, 99205. The public testimony that I will be sharing is on behalf of both myself and my supervisor. We first want to state that we appreciate the city's efforts in updating their stormwater ordinances to maintain compliance with their stormwater permits. Ecology had the opportunity to review the proposed addition to Section 17D 060140E, which pertains to the new requirement that private property owners retain a qualified third party to annually certify that inspection and proper maintenance of their stormwater facilities has been performed. We support this ordinance modification as it meets permit requirements for the city to develop, codify, and implement a program for stormwater inspection on private property. Verifying the continued maintenance and operation of private facilities ensures that the city's own stormwater system isn't being negatively impacted by any stormwater discharges that may originate from private property. We value the city as a partner in achieving a shared goal of protecting water quality, and I want to thank you for the council's time and offering Ecology the opportunity to comment on this very important change to city code. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work that you do to keep our water clean in Spokane. Any council commentary? Oh, no, sorry, this is just first reading, so next week you'll get to comment. All right, that brings us to the end of our legislative agenda, which leaves us with open forum. We have one person who signed up, Nicolette Occle Tree. So Nicolette, if you want to hit star three.
Do you need to read the other two?
She did.
Oh, she did.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, Nicolette, welcome back to City Council tonight. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening again, council. There is a real problem in our region with respect to public records. This week, the Inlander published an article about the Spokane Regional Health District, and in particular, statements made by current and former staff members indicating that SRHD Administrator Amelia Clark suggested folks avoid methods of communication that would be subject to public records requests, and allegedly suggested folks make comments and documentations in Word documents so they would be considered drafts and thus not be subject to public records requests. However, that's not a legal exemption to public records requests, and asking or ordering staff to avoid communications that are subject to public records requests flies in the face of what is owed to the public. I currently have a public records request pending with the Spokane Regional Health District that I placed last year, and I have had nothing but problems and violations of my rights with respect to public records requests. It has been very annoying, to say the least. Moreover, I, like many of my friends, file many public records requests with the city and the county from time to time, and one of the most salient things I've seen through those requests is how understaffed the city clerk's office is in processing those public records requests. And I don't think that it's always a matter of negligence or anything like that, I just literally think they don't have enough staff to process many of these requests. I think it's time that we talk about having a legitimate discussion about hiring more staff, but moreover, to getting with the times with technology. It should be much easier for us to access these kinds of records and have them immediately put online where somebody doesn't actually have to file a public records request. And there needs to be an easier way to form a sort of grievance that gets taken care of right away when you have a problem with these public records requests. The fact that certain agencies and people at agencies are telling folks that work for that agency to avoid methods of communication that would be subject to public records requests are absolutely unacceptable. And it's not just the Spokane Regional Health District. We've already heard that from Cupid Alexander when he was leaving, that he was told to avoid communication that would be subject to public records requests by the City Administrator Perkins. So I just ask you to do whatever it is you can do within your power to try to fully staff the records department and ensure that they're making the appropriate technological advances so that they can stay with the times and make their jobs easier and their commitments to the public easier, and to really re-educate those in charge to understand that public records requests are right as citizens to see, you know, what our government is doing, and to really press on them to let them know that they can't just be violating those rights willy-nilly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and that brings us to the end of our meeting.
Council President, my personal privilege.
Yes, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you so much. I felt like I needed to speak real quick about the protests that happened on Friday night here in Spokane. I was downtown enjoying my evening, and a bunch of anti-maskers, anti-vaxers came by, and I just felt it was appropriate for me to, you know, say on the record that I hope that everybody in our community gets their vaccine and wears a mask. I heard Councilmember Mum say earlier that by the time a year from now with these business fees, hopefully we'll be back to normal. And we won't be back to normal if people don't get their vaccines and don't do what we need to do for public health. So that protest was very scary for me. It made me fearful for our community, and I just wanted to say I hope that people in our community are listening to the facts and the science, and that they're getting their vaccines and wearing their masks to keep our community safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, as I said, that will bring us to the end of our evening. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. Have a great rest of the week, everyone. We'll see you next Monday. Good night.